Okay, ready? Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Come on, Gray's Mr. President. Jerem.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's absent and Festerson is absent and Mr. President is here.
Would all rise for the pledge of allegiance and states of states.
States.
Stay up for the.
Stay up.
... by Councilmember Ritz-Palls.
Who's not here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Paul, Councilmember Thompson.
Yes. You know that there's a lot of violence going on nationally and the fact that black men are, it's like a seasonal warfare against them, but not just black men, but young kids in general, and we really need a spirit of reconciliation. Some of the problems happen here also in Omaha. So my prayer today is that we have a summer that's gonna be a good summer and one in which we can have good relationships among each other, especially between the community and the police. I proactively, ahead of time proclaim that, that it's gonna be a positive summer and I'd just like for you to join in with me with that proclamation. Thank you very much. Thank you.
City clerk certified publication on Daily Record on April 24th, notes for our pre-council and regular city council meeting April 28, 2015. Current copy of meetings X posted on a white, on the, in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And this Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will not hear, will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off, turn off or mute any electronic devices. Mr. Clerk?
Zoning ordinance on final reading and planning board attachments, item number five. Ordinance to rezone property located 1323 Jackson Street from downtown service district to central business district. Said property also within an ACI-1 PL area of civic importance overlay district. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Today's a public hearing on item number five. Those are, proponents first, please.
Afternoon, Council. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, Omaha 68154. Here in a request of a change of zone on an existing piece of property that's currently zoned downtown service. As you know, it's property, when it's being revitalized, redeveloped, this is currently an apartment complex. That downtown service zoning no longer applies. We're asking for central business district zoning. And I'd be happy to ask you any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents to be heard? Any opponents to be heard? Public hearing is closed.
Yes, Mr. Thielen, what is the purpose of the rezon?
It's, it's a parking issue. It's a, currently an apartment complex. They'd like to go to the central business district so that they've got enough parking based on the central business district requirements as well as their use.
For the existing structure?
Correct.
So it's not anything new?
No, it is existing.
Thank you.
I'm back.
Okay, zero motions. We're moving second. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's passed five to zero. Resolutions, preliminary platton, platton subdivision agreements, item number six, resolution preliminary platton titled Indian Creek Landing Two, located northwest 192nd Street and West Maple Road along with attached conditions with a waiver of the cul-de-sac link, maximum is hereby accepted and preparation filed apply to the subdivisions hereby authorized. A, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is John Fullenkamp. My address is 11440 West Center Road here on behalf, behalf of the applicant, Gotch Development. This is nearing the completion of the Indian Creek subdivision, which was an Elkhorn development. I think you're probably familiar with it, west of 192nd Street and north of Maple. Here is Maple. Here was relocated 192nd Street that has not yet been constructed and we are seeking approval of a 42-lot subdivision that's located west of the existing park and it's a little, pretty much consistent with the preliminary plat that was developed when it was Elkhorn, but this one is more in keeping with Omaha's rules and regulations as it relates to the layout of the development. So it comes to you with the favorable recommendation of both the Planning Department and the Planning Board. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fullenkamp. Any other proponents to be heard today? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, Councilmember Paul has entered the chambers. Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Item number six has been adopted six to zero. Presumed City Council Rule 70, agenda items number seven through 10 shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Presumed City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 11 shall be laid over two weeks. Presumed City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 12 shall be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 13, Buffalo Wildwing Grill and Bar Number 27 at 4287 South 144th Street. Request permission for the reconstruction remodeling of the interior area of the present Class C liquor license location. We have a request from Buffalo Wild Wings to withdraw this application.
motion to withdraw, second.
Moved and seconded, no lights, roll call.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item number 13 has been withdrawn. Item number 14, Rehab Lounge, 2615 South 120th Street. Request permission for a special designation license for dance at the River City Star North Field, 151 Freedom Park Road on May 24, 2015, from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM with music ending at 1:00 AM.
Tom Ingwin, 4535.
Let me start. Public hearing is today. Proponents, please.
Tom Ingwin, 4535 Grover Street, Homer, Nebraska 68106. I have a note before, before, for special permits and some of the hurdles that we had to go through is noise complaints and I come with this new event with the partnership with the team over at River City Star and hope that this is a win-win situation for us all to do, continue what we like to do and host events outdoors. But, so, here's a picture of the landscaping and the outdoor perimeter areas is where we'll be fenced off and just so I'm clear, so we're clear, the boat that they actually offer is called the Contiki Oats, right here. That's gonna be 21-Up the entire event, whereas the general admission and minors that we wanted to have offered for the concert is gonna be under this stage area here. So I request for your approval to have the outdoor music end at 1:00 out here and as we continue to do, break down the staging area, we wanted to continue with 21-Up just on the boat as they normally offer that service in their general business as well. If you have any question, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents to be heard? Any opponents to be heard on this issue? Public hearing is closed. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tommy, I've often said before, and I'll just repeat, that I appreciate the things that you've done. If I were to go back a couple of years, there were some back and forth and then I challenged you and then you stepped up and you've met every challenge and that you do a good job of trying to work with us, especially when it comes to noise abatement and things like that. So I have nothing but good to say. I do know this isn't my district and so I'll have to hear from the council rep from that district regarding the tying cutoff that you want the music for, but I did want my council colleagues to know that you're one of the bars that has done a good job of really trying to work with us and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jerem. Councilmember Jerem.
Yeah, you were with me until you talked about the mixed crowd. So I turned around just to see if Mr. Mumgarth had a strange look on his face. He did. So that tells me that I need to ask City Legal if there are any legal issues about your application as, as proposed.
Sure.
So, Mr. Mumgarth, do you wanna share with us whether this causes you any concern in terms of the liquor laws or our ordinances?
Well, when you mentioned that part of it's going to be under, Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney, when you mentioned that you're going to allow people on the licensed premises who are under 21, that would be permitted. Since your event is going to be something where the sale of alcohol is more than incidental, you would only be able to allow people who are 18 to 21 to be on the premises if you've got a music venue permit, which would be an additional step you would have to take. You may well qualify for that, but then you'd have to take the steps to qualify, to carry out the music venue permit requirements. For example, the ones that slow down and waiting room comply with daily. The fact that it's an SDL doesn't make any difference.
Okay. We do have a music venue license. Does that go over with a special designation license as a?
No, it does not. That's location specific.
And I did ask the, this is district.
My district.
Two. And there was a thought that the last event that they had there, the music ended at midnight, but the event itself was allowed to go on later than that. So do you have any problem with amending your application to have the music part of this end at midnight?
I do not.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve, subject to the move, or amend, subject to the music ending at midnight and the contingent upon the applicant getting all the proper permits.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. No further lights.
I think we're gonna do this as an amendment to it, to just amend the music at the moment.
Sort of be an amendment?
This is an amendment. Just the music, this is, to amend the music till midnight.
Midnight.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Dr. Thompson.
So, is part of this amendment also the, the music venue permit?
Getting the proper permits.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm, as amended, getting the proper permits.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, it's removed and seconded to approve this pending the.
Well, this is, this is just the amendment.
Just the amendment, okay. It's amended to 12, to change the music hours from 1:00 to 12:00. No further lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Okay. Passed as amended.
Thank you.
Contingent on getting proper permits, six to zero.
Thanks.
Item number 15, resolution that the conditions of package, of the packaged liquor license held by Easy Drive Package, 5124 North 24th Street, which were held sale of any containers less than 40 ounces of beer and 375 milliliters of liquor should be removed.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Proponents, please. Your proponent, go ahead.
Glenetta Lou, 1621 Layer, Easy Drive Package Store.
Is that, just wanted to make yourself available for any questions? Is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay. Any other proponents to be heard today? Any opponents to this license today? Okay, public hearing is closed.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Buster Brown, City Clerk. There was a statement that Easy Drive Package Liquor has signed, which each council member has a copy, which basically states that they would be under a six-month probationary period until November 1, 2015, that these restrictions may be reimposed by majority vote of the City Council Liquor, or City Council Law Committee if Easy Drive is found guilty by the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission of any violations of law occurring prior to that period.
Okay. Does this require any further explanation, Mr. Mumgarth? And maybe we should run through it just real quickly so that everybody's clear for the record.
Well, she's asked to have the single sales restrictions completely removed from her license. That's a twofold, a two-step process. You would have to agree to that and then the State Commission would have to agree to that because they also have imposed on the license. If that happens, then she has agreed that if any time in this next six months, she's found guilty of a violation of law that occurs from the conduct of her customers, then that the law committee can reimpose that condition and it would be on her license thereafter. She wouldn't have to come back to the council. She, that penalty, for example, could be imposed by the law committee. What we're trying to do here is basically give her a chance for the next six months, put her on probation, and if that doesn't work out, then the restriction would be put back in place.
Thank you, Mr. Mumgarth. Let me say a couple of other things as well, so that, so that you're aware of what some of the concerns are of the council, of the council and some of my personal concerns. When we, when we're starting, when we're doing liquor licenses, we have found that in a number of places where you sell single bottles, cans and those airplane shots that are talked about, they end up sometimes in people's yards and on the street and that sort of thing. And so what we're attempting to do is try to do something that will, that, because we're not trying to put anybody out of business, but what we do wanna do is make sure that the business is thriving, but also that the neighborhoods are being taken care of as well. So one of the things I would encourage you to do if you haven't already done is join the nearest neighborhood association so that you're always aware of what's going on in the neighborhood. Okay?
Okay.
All right. That's all. I don't have anything else for you. I just, I just wanted you to know that and know that I agree to, to doing this, to giving you the opportunity to, you know, increase your business, but also be a good neighbor as well. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. It's been moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's, 15 is adopted, five to one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause I place on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items number 16 and 17 were held on April 21, 2015. Moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
16 or 17 are passed, six to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items number 18 through 33 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the item, the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name and address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second. It's been moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 to 33 are adopted, six to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item 34, ordinance to create a city workforce development initiative through a city construction contract allowance program, A is communications from city attorney and B is a document in opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number 34, this is a continuation of the public hearing. Are there any proponents today? Any opponents today? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, earlier today, I was pleased to share the announcement that the mayor and I were able to reach an agreement and with the assistance of our colleagues here and many others, including our chief of staff, Jim Doubting, and the mayor's chief of staff, Marty Bealick, and others who took a look at the situation in Omaha in terms of the north and southeast sections of our community and other places where despite a good economy, we have pockets of our city with 22% unemployment, extremely high poverty rates, growing poverty rates in southeast Omaha, and wanted to do something about it. And this announcement was that the mayor will propose an additional appropriation in the 2016 budget of $400,000 in additional funds to go to the city's partner for workforce development, Heartland Workforce Solutions, to expand workforce development for adults in Omaha who are unemployed and underemployed. And folks, I view this as a game changer and it's kinda funny because when you do an agreement like this, they, the mayor's communications person asks you for a quote when they send out a press announcement, and that was the term that I used, game changer. And when I was sharing this with our colleagues, Councilman Gray was unaware of it, he said, "That's a game changer." So I said, "Well, maybe we're on to something here because this is a big deal. This will allow our partners to ramp up what we're doing to, to make a significant increase in workforce development." And a hand up to those people who believe, many of whom believe they've been forgotten. And so I'm very pleased, I wanna thank the mayor for her cooperation in this and everyone here and in her staff that participated. And with that, because we are voluntarily agreeing to do something, as I've said, I would, if we did that, place this ordinance on file. So I'm pleased to make that motion today.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to place on file. Councilmember Paul's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did miss my invocation earlier.
King. They, I was promoted.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
I will say this, I was at a meeting with him dealing with an organization similar to what we're trying to do and I did say you were a minister. I mean, truly, it was well spoken. But getting back to this, in my invocation, I was gonna talk about something dealing with miracles. And to me, this is sort of how we all can create little miracles and I'm trying to get my invocation in here. This, this could be one of those little miracle changes in a lot of people's lives because we all, and this is, I looked throughout this room, we all in some way caused life to be good for people and it is sort of a miracle. I do wanna thank you for your tenacity on trying to get this moving through the system. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of comments on my part as well. First of all, I think it's important that we thank the mayor for the, the work that she and her staff have put in to help make this become a reality. I wanna thank all of the council members and specifically Councilmember Jerem for pushing this item forward and continuing to have this discussion. Thank you to my colleagues on the council for continuing to have this dialogue because poverty is a key, probably one of the most important issues in our community. If we don't address it, a lot of things that we do are not gonna have much benefit because we're not addressing the people who really have the need. Secondly, and, and just as important, I think, is when we began, we're Heartland Workforce Solutions, when we got it back from the state, we created a nonprofit arm, that's why we called it Heartland Workforce Solutions, for a nonprofit arm to do some, some of the what we're talking about today with the $400,000. And today, what I would like to do is challenge businesses and other stakeholders in the community to step up and make a contribution as well. This is a game changer, but it could be even more of a game changer if our businesses and our other community partners step up and put in some resources to help make this thing grow because this is a game changer that can really turn this city around if we're focused and if we're providing resources for it. The only way that's going to happen, however, in a major way, is for businesses and other, other supporters of our community to step up. I've heard on a number of occasions, different businesses and other organizations ask, what is the city's skin in the game? Well, the city's skin in the game is $400,000. Now the question is back to the businesses and other members of our community, what's gonna be your skin in the game to solve this problem of poverty that exists within our community at a level that ought to be unacceptable to all of us? So my challenge is to the business community and others to step up, join the city, and let's make this thing even bigger than it already can be with the $400,000 initial contribution. Again, thanks to the mayor and the city council for this effort. With that, there's been a motion to place on file, no other lights. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul's.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
34 is placed on file. Presumed City Council Rule 7F, agenda items number 35, 37, shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Presumed City Council Rule 7D, the public hearing on agenda item number 38 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item number 39, ordinance to approve an agreement with Boys and Girls Club of the Midlands to employ a North Omaha gang specialist from Justice, U.S. Department of Justice grants.
Public hearing on agenda item number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
We'll take items 40, 41, and 42. It's all the same topic. Item number 40, ordinance to amend sections 40 to 7 through 55, 86 through 106, 176 through 205, 268 through 278, 298 through 308, 332 through 340, 34, 374 through 384, 419 through 425, 490 through 505, sections 5, 45, 37 through 541, to harmonize procedures for the examination, licensing, and review of competency of various trades through the elimination of separate licensing boards and a new Article 12 to provide for the creation of an examining and licensing board. 41 is ordinance to amend section 44, 51 through 64, electrical regarding the licensing and examination of electricians. 42 is ordinance to amend 50, chapter 55, signs and awnings, to amend 51 dash 1 through 51 dash 11, 51, 31 through 36, regarding certificate for competency for sign erection.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 40, 41, and 42 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, opponents, please. How many are there here to speak today on this item, on any of these items? If you can come to our front, please, so that we can get you all in and do it in an expeditious manner, we can get you up front here. Thank you. You can stand or sit if you like. You can sit in the front row or you... I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Mike McAvoy. My address is 508 Third Street in Waterloo, Nebraska. Good afternoon. I'm here to speak about the changes to the Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 40, specifically the changes to the steam fitters and pipe fitters examining board. I am currently the chairperson of the City of Omaha Steam Fitters Examining Board and I'm here representing only myself. I've been on the board for about 11 years and I have been a steam fitter for 30 years, 26 of those years as a licensed City of Omaha jurymen steam fitter. This proposal in front of you today is to merge several of the boards that are in place today. These boards include the air conditioning and air distribution, which is the ACAD, the These boards include the air conditioning and air distribution, which is the ACAD, the boiler and pressure vessels, flammable liquids, oil burners, liquefied petroleum gas, hoisting and portable engineers, steam fitting and pipe fitting, and electrical. And I do concur that some of these boards could be consolidated that have close ties to the steam fitters board. On the other hand, there are some of these boards that are vastly different. It seems to me that the mindset here was to take some of these boards that deal with different parts of construction and put them together because they all seem similar. This is not the case. Just to give you kind of a little rundown of what I do for a living and try to give you an idea of what it's about, the scope of work for steam fitting and pipe fitting is, we weld pipe, we do crane signaling and rigging, we install boilers, chillers, and process piping for manufacturing. We install medical gas lines in hospitals and clinics. We install natural gas lines, propane lines, high and low pressure steam and condensate systems, refrigeration pressure piping, hydraulic heating and cooling systems, ultra-low systems used in research facilities, and we do industrial and commercial service work. So as you can see, we do more than just pipe steam. In order to obtain the knowledge to install these different systems, there's a great amount of training, experience, and continuing education involved. There are numerous licenses and certifications that are needed to perform this work. In my opinion, the most coveted license in our trade is the City of Omaha Journeyman Steam Fitters License. It's a very difficult test that you have to pass in order to get this license, and I think that's the beauty of it. That's which way I would like to have it. The business of steam fitting can be very dangerous when dealing with high-pressure steam, ammonia, or natural gas. You can never be too safe. I teach OSHA classes to journeyman and apprentices, and one of the first things we talk about is do not practice beyond your scope of training. That's how you get in trouble. If you haven't been trained to use a crane or lift, stay out of that cab. If you haven't been trained in electrical work, keep away from that electrical panel. It kind of all boils down to this, why would you want someone on your board that has great knowledge of one subject but little or no knowledge of the other three? Because there's like four different trades that you're trying to all put into the same thing. And you'd be forcing them to vote on something that they don't truly understand. My recommendation would be to consolidate the flammable liquids, oil burners, and liquefied petroleum gas boards into the Steam Fitters and Pipe Fitters Examining Board. I am proud to be serving on the Steam Fitters Board. I have enjoyed working with all the people on these boards. They drop everything they are doing to volunteer their time. We try to make good decisions to keep the people of the Omaha area safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Dan Hughes, IBW Local 22, 8946, L Street. Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. The amendment to Chapter 44 that is proposed would include eliminating the electrical board. This would be a mistake. The members that make up this board are all active within the electrical industry and are representative of groups that have different interests. The main focus of the electrical board is to protect and serve the public interest. The mayor has often and very recently said that she is committed to conducting government transparently. The individuals that serve on the electrical board hold degrees, certifications, and licenses. They bring citizen input into the oversight of our city's government and therefore are an important component to transparency. Safety should be the number-one priority of the mayor and the city. Elimination of the electrical board puts public safety at risk. The city just last week, on April 21st, amended Chapter 43 to improve the codes and ultimately the safety of the citizens who reside in boarding and rooming houses. Jay Davis repeatedly stated how safety was in fact the number-one priority and how important that it is that the city does everything it can to keep us safe. He also spoke of how he needs more help and had hopes of adding additional inspectors to his staff. The electrical board members in their respective positions in the industry plan, design, build, and work in the electrical field. They know firsthand the codes, what makes us safer and what does not. Eliminating this board and the knowledge and the experience that come along with it reduces the safety for the citizens of Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Andruszek. I'm with Steam Fitters and Plumbers Local 464, 13505 B Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I've been a steam fitter for 38 years. Four of those were as an apprentice. I've carried a license in the City of Omaha as a steam fitter for 35 years. I'm going to be a little redundant because I've already got my speech written and might carry or cover some of the stuff, but I'm going to go over it anyway. Steam fitters is kind of a mysterious trade. A lot of people have heard of steam fitters but really don't know what we do. Obviously, we deal with steam and condensate, which includes boilers, condensate receivers, pumps, et cetera. We deal with hydraulic piping, which is hot chilled water, which also includes boilers and expansion tanks and things of that nature. Fuel lines, which include natural gas, propane, gasoline, fuel oil. Refrigeration, which includes refrigerants of freon and ammonia. Medical lines, med gas, oxygen, vacuum lines that are used in hospitals, and we work a lot with pressure vessels and tanks. We have a lot of training involved in this five-year apprenticeship program, and we subjected ourselves, it's a self-imposed continuing education program, 16 hours per year for all of our journeyman steam fitters. I believe the existing amendment proposes consistent and uniform procedures for testing, examination, and licensing and review of competency. It sounds like a one-size-fits-all system. Each trade that's represented here has its own inherent issues, concerns, and dangers with each trade, which does not lend itself well to one-size-fits-all. Third-party testing was proposed in this as another one-size-fits-all idea, which I don't feel fits. The current boards that are in place right now are designed to test for whatever pertains in that particular trade to the City of Omaha. Third-party testing attempts to make relevant what is, in other parts of the country, important, may or may not be important in Omaha, Nebraska. Even cities as close as Omaha and Bellevue have different needs for testing and licensing. The type of buildings and the type of industry that is in Bellevue is not the same type of thing that's in Omaha. The licensing has to cover what is existing in the city that is being used in. Licensing should be in place to ensure the safety of the public in general, and specifically the people who work around whatever's being licensed. A construction site is a very dangerous place. Omaha has a great track record of protecting the people who work on construction sites in an inherently dangerous profession. The City of Omaha should be proud of the record that it has. We simply cannot allow electricians to make decisions on steam fitter issues, nor can we make steam fitters make decisions on electrical issues. We do not have the expertise to make decisions on electrical issues, nor do the electricians or anyone that, excuse me, anyone else who is being considered to be consolidated have the expertise to make decisions for each other. All we're doing here is lumping construction trades together simply because they are construction An analogy for this would be if, would you go to a podiatrist because you needed the services of an oral surgeon? Or would you go to a body shop because the transmission in your car is slipping? They're in the same field. One works on automobiles, one works on human beings, but they're specialized fields, and construction is no different. They're highly technical fields, and they need the training and the licensing to be effective and do the proper job. The proposed board is going to consist of nine people in unrelated trades making decisions on things in which they have little or no expertise. Board members not having the expertise on a topic would have to rely on board members, other board members, and their expertise. Why would you have somebody vote on something when they know little or nothing about it? I'm a big proponent of streamlining, streamlining, and efficiency of offices. I would agree with Mike McAvoy. It makes a lot of sense to consolidate some of these boards into one, make things easier. I would propose the flammable liquids board, the oil burner board, and the liquefied petroleum gas board, which is propane, to be merged under the Steam Fitter and Pipe Fitter Examining Board. These are all things that a licensed steam fitter does, and it makes perfect sense to merge all those under one roof and streamline the process. If anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Just one. What was the third one you mentioned again? You mentioned flammable liquids, oil burner board, and...
Flammable liquids, oil burners, liquefied petroleum gas, under the Steam Fitter and Pipe Fitter Examining Board.
Thank you. What about the boiler?
Boilers are currently under the Steam Fitter License.
Okay. So the liquefied...
Liquefied petroleum gas is propane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next opponent, please.
I didn't have anything prepared. I'm Steve Denna, 87 20-F Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Owner of Grunwald Mechanical Contractors and Engineers, as well as Larry's Boiler Service. I caught wind of this possible ordinance change. I was surprised that it was being considered for a lot of the main reasons that you've heard already, and I won't bore you with repetitive stuff. Being a mechanical engineer, professional mechanical engineer myself, we go through a lot of schooling and take into account the safety of the people in which these services are serving, the systems that we're putting in. And I would agree with everything that's been said here today so far. I would not want electrician, even though they know their electrical stuff, I wouldn't want them trying to set codes for our mechanical systems or making decisions for the mechanical systems, nor would I want to try to even attempt to try to make a decision on their type of systems that they work on, on electrical, because I don't want anything to do with that electrical stuff. We deal with high-pressure steam, low-pressure steam, high-pressure air systems, and I think that it would be a big mistake combining a board together of many different disciplines to make decisions on many different, very technical, systems which could affect the life safety of the Omaha people and citizens. So I'd just recommend that you take a good, hard look at whether or not this is the right thing from a safety standpoint. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
I was a proponent.
You are a proponent.
Yep, I did. Get my hand up quick enough. Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. Wade Mayfield, 13330 I Street. And I couldn't agree more with these gentlemen on the trades and the depth of training, knowledge, continuing education that needs to go into this to create a good, safe product for the citizens of Omaha. I absolutely couldn't agree anymore with them on that. And our jobs, and I'm a contractor, are to ensure a high-quality, safe product to the end-users, no matter if it's commercial or residential. I think that's supported in the code when you start looking at continuing education and you start looking at the benchmark of competency is what we're looking at here. And where I've become a proponent of this is, it starts to bring a specific focus down to a board of saying, "What's going to make the best sense for testing and the process in which somebody needs to go through in order to be deemed competent to work in any of our fields?" And I think if you look through the United States, you're going to find countless cities and municipalities that have adopted this, have adopted these kinds of boards, as well as adopted standardized testing. That way, it doesn't matter if you're union or non-union or whatever you are, you know what the standard of competency is. You can get the readily-made testing materials, and you can learn, and you can teach, and you can create a vibrant business around the fact that we can train and educate people to be their best because we know what the benchmark of the testing requirements look like. So to me, the, I don't want to get too far off track here, but if you look at our economy, and if you look at Omaha specifically in the trade, you're looking at about a 2% unemployment rate. Yeah, that's wonderful, right? But as generations continue to retire, one of the things, the biggest things facing the trades as they move forward, and I'm sure these gentlemen would agree also, is finding qualified workforce and qualified labor that is, that wants to get into the trades and out of high school or even part of taking some college to get into the trades. How do we open up and make it more like the medical profession or the lawyers where you have the bar, right? And these people stand in front of and say, "Hey, here's the measurements you have to hit. We're not associated with the training facility or any of that." We're going to say, "Here's the knowledge level in which you have to reach and pass to be deemed competent to work in this field." And I would absolutely be a proponent of seeing something like that here.
Okay. Wait, let me stop you for a minute here, just for a second. Just one question I have, just a clarification from me.
Yes, sir.
You said you were a proponent, but most of your testimony seemed to dovetail what some of the others were already saying. Are you a proponent of the ordinance changes that are proposed here?
I am. I agree with what's being changed. I think we agree on the fact of training and all of that and competent people. I think where we split is, is who controls the testing part of it in the market competency and who says you can test and what does that look like? That's, I believe this board can have a more streamlined focus of, here's what we want from a testing standpoint, here's the standardized testing we want to go to so it can be better defined for the people in our field.
Okay. Let me have some questions for you later. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other opponents? Yes, sir.
John Churchill, Service One.
John Churchill?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to, I guess, echo the comments of Mr. Wade at this point in time. On behalf of Service One, we feel that this ordinance will give us the continuity that's needed in both the HVAC industry and bringing a number of items. The only question I would have is, I'd like to see the plumbing included in this type of licensing board.
Okay, thanks, John. Appreciate it. Any other opponents? Did any proponents miss the head when I asked for hands? Okay, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who's here that could represent the mayor?
Cassie Seager in mayor's office.
Cassie, in my mind, I heard two separate conversations, one being testing and the independence of that testing and the integrity of that testing. But on the other hand, I heard, how can electricians tell steam fitters, you know, how can they make decisions? Could you clear up any confusion there might be? What is the purpose for this move? And how do those two conversations come into play in light of what the mayor's trying to do?
Yeah, there's a couple of different things. And actually, I know Jennifer Taylor with the Law Department who did a lot of work in reviewing the codes, checking them versus state statutes, state requirements, et cetera. She'll probably be better equipped to answer part of that. But I can tell you from our office's standpoint, we've looked at this for some time, and actually, we're not the first administration to look at this. The prior administration also reviewed all of the boards and commissions, had made some recommendations. I believe they started in 2012 in reviewing these, and that carried into '13, and then with the administration change in June of '13, they were never able to implement or put forth anything. And so we started looking at it as we continued to look through boards and commissions, make appointments. You know, I handle a lot of the appointments for the mayor in terms of finding people, making, presenting potential candidates, keeping track of when expirations are made, et cetera. It's a huge, huge undertaking. And so as we started going through it and really questioning what some of the purpose of certain boards are, and who's on them, do they meet, what are they really providing us? And so that's really kind of where this started. In terms of the question regarding electricians being able to tell steam fitters one thing or another, I know that they're obviously two very different trades. There are some different aspects to them, but really, the root of your question, I would defer that to our legal department.
Okay. Jennifer, if you don't mind coming in.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department.
Ms. Taylor, it seems like we've got some competing things going on. On one hand, we're talking about testing, the independence of that testing process and the integrity of it. But over here, we're also talking about who makes decisions for which group and whether they're qualified or not. And right now, I would think that the general public is not quite crystal clear as to what's the purpose of what we're doing. Could you talk about that first? And then, are those two things going to clash?
Sure. The, what I call the licensing examination board that has been proposed here would undertake specifically that function, licensing and examination of applicants for certificates or licenses to practice trades. I think some of the confusion comes from where many of these mechanical boards have undertaken or sometimes consider a broader sense of duties than what is actually intended for those boards to undertake. All of the boards that are being considered in the ordinance... All of the boards that are being considered in the ordinance up in front of you, their duties, and when I, when I put this together, I found boards that had very similar duties. All of these boards have the duty of certifying examinations for passage. They then certify those individuals to the permits inspections department for competency and application for licensure. So what ends up happening is an individual who wants to participate in a trade in the city of Omaha goes to the permits and inspections department. They apply for a license or certificate of competency. The particular board for that trade then reviews their, either administers and/or reviews their test scores and certifies to permits and inspections whether or not that person is competent to receive a certificate of competency or a license. It's that licensing and examination process that is being combined into a single board. Beyond that, what the board would do is then also review for complaints against licensies or certificate holders. So they would be responsible for the examination, certification of licensure to the permits and inspections department, and then review of those individuals for competency once they refused, received a license or certificate. So it's simply a testing process. As far as whether or not individuals on this board, for example, electricians making decisions about code related to steam fitting, that's not a duty of this board, and it's actually not a duty of any of the boards that are being addressed here today.
Am I to assume, then, that they've been making decisions and having practices that were beyond their original scope?
To some extent where some of these boards have been making decisions or recommendations on code, that is, for all intents and purposes, outside of the scope of their duties within the Omaha municipal code, yes.
And yet, for years, they've gotten used to some of those decisions that are out of the scope, and I imagine that they would find some of that useful. As a council, how much should we consider that that's valuable to them, but yet it's outside of their scope?
I would answer that. I think to understand your question, in talking to the planning and permits department, most of the code changes that are brought forth of this council are actually brought forth by members of permits and inspections in the planning department. So that's the department that brings forth code changes to this body, not necessarily the boards in question here. The ACAD board, executive board, don't actually create or suggest or draft code. That comes from our internal departments. So those departments would still be the ones suggesting or introducing code changes that relate to electrical work, steam fitter work, ACAD work. Whether or not those boards should or shouldn't be making decisions on those types of code changes, again, it's outside of the scope, whether or not they should continue to do that, that would require technically a code change to give them that duty that they don't have today.
Okay. And just because they've been doing it by way of practice doesn't necessarily mean they should have been doing it?
That's probably accurate.
Okay. But that's not to say that it was useless also. I'm still grappling with that. So not only does this ordinance combine boards, it's also redefining them back to their original intent?
I don't think they've ever, the code has never changed beyond the original intent. It's just reminding, I think, reminding the general public and streamlining the process to, that's what these boards were intended to do, that's what this board does. Testing, examination, review competency. As I went through the process and looked at the various different code sections, I also found there's a lot of differences within our code as to how you make an application, who you make the application to, who issues the license. So another function that came out of this process was by doing this, we now have a streamlined process. It's consistent for every single trade, the way that they undertake applying for a license or certificate. It's the same amongst all trades now, which was not, was not the case before.
You know, I had given initial support for this, but that's because I hadn't heard both sides yet. And it's just interesting how this has evolved into an intriguing conversation because really, both sides don't see the problem the same way. And so each seven of us, we're going to have to grapple with the way the original intention versus what it's grown to be. And that's a new curveball that I'm getting today that I'm having to grapple with. But thank you for that clarification. That's all I have for now. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Just have a question, and I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor, if you could come back up. We heard, which I think could be concerning, is that we heard there was an argument, well, licensing is necessary. I mean, this board, the purpose of this board, will be to license these individual trades. Is that correct?
That is exactly correct.
And they'll have a member from each of the individual trains, trades on this board?
That is correct. In fact, actually, when undertaking this process, I looked at building border review, which is a board that I work with regularly. That is a board that has many different trades. They have architects, they have builders, they have a general representative, yet they review waivers to code for construction. So you have a number of different disciplines, all dealing with a number of different disciplines and deciding what's appropriate. This board is correct. It's for licensing, licensing of individuals and ensuring that those individuals are competent to practice the trade that they want to practice.
And the testing isn't, it's, the individual boards aren't currently coming up with the test, are they? Already, we have third-party testing, is that right?
We have third-party testing for the majority of our boards. There are a couple of boards that still actually draft and administer their own city version of a test, although from my understanding from Mr. Davis, and he can be more clear about that, that test hasn't changed in years. So this board would be capable of administering that test.
Do you know which ones those are?
If memory serves, it is the air conditioning board and the sign examiners, is that correct? Steam fitters.
Okay. And so I guess what I'm just trying to figure out is what would necessarily change? Because we did hear about this could create safety issues. And I think I understand that concern if these boards were actually creating policy. But it's the council that would, that ends up passing the codes.
That is correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, even if these boards have been discussing code changes, it doesn't happen unless this council votes on it.
That is correct. And when I went through and looked at all seven of the boards that were included in this ordinance, I took the duties that were given to each board by the city code, through the city code, and nothing of those duties was removed from any single board. So no board, by combining them into the single board, not a single duty has been removed. They all, this combined board has the same duties every single one of the individual boards have.
Okay. All right, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mike McAvoy, Mark Andresek, and Steve, is it Benner? Would you come down, please? You have to say your names again when you talk.
Okay.
So the record knows who you are. But Mike, would you come up, please?
Sure. Mike McAvoy.
Did you say you're the current chair of the steam fitters board?
Yes, that's true.
I thought I heard you, and I wasn't quick enough to get the notes down, but I heard the three of you that I've called back up say you agree that there can be some consolidation and want to help achieve that goal, and you named some boards that you thought were within your scope of trade and practice. And I wanted to see if we can get a list of those again.
Sure. Let me look it up here. Oh, to consolidate, along with the steam fitters board, the flammable liquids, the oil burners.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Flammable liquids.
Here I go again, going too fast.
Oil burners.
And the liquefied petroleum gas.
All right.
In my opinion, those would all fall under the scope of the work of steam fitting.
And did I hear you also say that you did crane rigging or?
No, we don't do crane rigging. We do rigging and signaling of cranes. We do not jump in the cab and operate the crane. That's a whole different, a whole different ballgame for us.
So there was, there's one thing here I saw on this memo from our city legal that talked about the stationary engineers, and there was something I thought I saw in rigging.
It's, anytime you have a crane, they're rigging.
Hoisting and portable, is that under the electrical board as it stands?
No, I'm not sure about that one there.
Okay. Are they in your scope of trade?
No, no.
Okay.
It would be to signal the crane, which would be signal the crane operator that's doing the.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mark Andresek, would you come up? You have to say your name.
Mark Andresek.
Did you hear Mr. McAvoy say that he thought that the steam fitter's scope of trade would encompass flammable liquids, oil burners, and liquefied petroleum gas?
Yes.
And did you testify you thought those could be consolidated within your steam fitter board as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any others that I missed?
No. I can answer the question that you asked about the operating and hoisting.
Yes.
That falls under the operating engineers. They operate the equipment.
Okay.
We signal the person who's operating the crane to put our pipe or our equipment in place.
Thank you. In terms of Steve, would you come up? Benner, from Grunwald and Larry's Boiler Service?
Yes, sir.
Do you say your name?
Steve Benner.
And how do you spell your last name, Steve?
B as in boy, E and A.
Okay, thank you. Did you hear the list that Mike McAvoy and Mark Andresek gave on the consolidation?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Is there any others that you thought could come within your scope of practice that we missed?
I don't think so. The boilers are already within that, that scope of work or that.
Thank you. Would the, Dan Hughes from IBW22, and if there was another electrician that came, you could come down too, but I wanted to.
Dan Hughes?
Dan, I don't recall, and maybe I missed, whether you thought there were any possibility of consolidation within the electrical board. But as I understand, electricians on larger-scale projects in some of the smaller commercials, you are also wiring the alarm systems?
Yeah, we've got load voltage electricians that would handle most of that work, that's correct. As far as the other scopes right now, the boards that are on the table right now, at least, I don't, I don't see much consolidation with the electricians. My thought and point is with, with the consolidating of these, and you know, like we've talked about, we're not talking about these boards setting any policies, but just like Ms. Melton brought up, these boards all report to you guys. They report back to the council, they report back to the mayor, and I think that diversity is what makes that very important so that you guys, you know, have the electricians talking to you about the electrical issues and having the fitters talk to you about their issues. And you know, I think that's where that really comes into play and why, why it's important to preserve that, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor? Want to come back up?
Jennifer Taylor, City Law.
Of the boards that you have in your memo that you recommended for consolidation slash elimination, which, if any, do not presently hold meetings?
I know the electrical board hasn't met yet this year. The oil burner board has not met in several years, to my knowledge. Sign examiners meets infrequently. Jay is probably better equipped to answer that than I am.
All right. Jay Davis, I saw you up there hiding in the shadows of, want to come down?
Jay Davis, Assistant Planning Director, and I wasn't really hiding, I was ducking.
Now, with regard to these boards that don't meet, it's my understanding we had kind of a dust-up with the electrical board to describe it one way or another in terms of there not being a position that's vacant filled and, and it hasn't met since that happened. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So that board has been an active, regularly-meeting board, right?
That's correct.
Up until this, the rhubarb, so to speak.
Well, and to kind of clarify something on that, the electrical examination board, as they're called, was called the electrical examination board for a reason. We used to administer the electrical tests for licensing to those members. We no longer do that. We only have registration in the city of Omaha. The state of Nebraska actually licensed the electricians, and because of that, the board serves in revocation hearings for licenses. That's kind of where that, and if I may take a moment, because obviously you saw me ducking back there, there's two things I look at this a little bit. The boards, to me, combining them would help because I have a staff member who's currently sitting in this room that administers five or six boards. And his job as a chief inspector can't be done because he's always doing board stuff. It would help, from an efficiency standpoint, if I could bring these boards in under one. But the second part of this I want to clarify is that the code is written on a national basis, and we adopt the code, and when we bring it to you, we've spoken to the industries, whether it's building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical. We've talked to them about what works best, what we think the amendment should or should not be. And in most cases, we try not to amend the code any more than what we have to, because if the industry professionals, in the fire, in the case of a lot of our codes, National Fire Protection Association are actually writing those codes, I use that as a basis for our guideline for safety.
I know. Let me just stop you right there. Because we've had this conversation. And the model, first of all, when you bring codes to us, we've all agreed, you're bringing to us what the minimum level is for standards in the city, right?
Correct.
They're minimum codes. They're not the gold standard, they're minimums.
That's correct.
But what you bring in terms of the quote "minimum codes," we then can make amendments to it if we decide and have the collective will and enough votes here to adopt enhancements, for whatever reason, including safety, to those minimum standards, correct?
That is correct.
But what you bring to us in terms of the national codes by trade, those are the product of national committees that sit and meet regularly around the country that have designated representatives from manufacturing, from trades, from any assemblage of people with knowledge and expertise in that particular field, right?
That is correct.
So it seems to me that we have this national group and model that works pretty well at coming up with consensus standards, which then get passed along and distributed to the states, and the state adopt, and then they come to us, and then we have decision to make whether to do that here. And the practice has been, and here we get into this original intent or not, the practice has been that we typically have gotten input and feedback, whether formally through a vote, whether they should have or not, from our boards here, or informally by the board or members of the board coming down and either speaking as a board or individually as someone on the board with that expertise, correct?
That's correct.
So I applaud the effort that the mayor has to try to consolidate, but I, the safety cord and the cross-discipline approach concerns me when we get into safety and things that these particular trades do, particularly when we know what, on a national sense, there's consensus of what works, where you get input and balance of perspective, and it's by the trade and the discipline. So I want to work to try to consolidate some of these. I thought it was great, and I would applaud the owner, who's the mechanical engineer, Steve Benner, who happened to come up with the same agreed scope of practice consolidation opportunities that the head of the local steam fitters union did and the head of the steam fitters licensing board did. So that may be one area I would think we should definitely look at doing. The electricians, I'd like to see us get past this high-center position we seem to be stuck on. The electricians, I'd like to see us get past this high center position we seem to be stuck on. Get the position that's vacant filled and let them continue to what, do what they do. Perhaps Dan and his group and the owners of the alarm review type services can get together to see if there's opportunity for consensus there, Jay. But I'm hesitant to, I guess, take the big leap that, that's being proposed and would want to maybe look at the opportunity to take some of these boards that really never meet as an opportunity to say, should we have those anymore? Could they be somewhere else? Could they be consolidated? But that's kind of what I'm thinking right now.
Well, and as you all know, I'm pretty much bent, however you want to look at it, on licensing. I think that's an important part of our business all the way across the board and not just in the trades that are here today. I know that when we went to building, we went to standardized test, which has really helped me because we can use that in, in different areas. I mean, we still have work to do on that. I think eventually we're going to go a regional type license, not the test. The test will always be the same. But we use that to our advantage. The local tests that we have, I want to say this so it doesn't sound bad. If you're a licensed tradesman in this city in any of the trades, electrical plumbing mechanic, especially in the, in the steam fitting, the boiler makers, and those different types of trades. Yeah, I grew up in Pittsburgh. And in Pittsburgh, you started out at the bottom, and you worked your way through the family tradition all the way up to the, to the time you became a journeyman fitter or a boiler maker, whatever the case may be. And to them, that license is probably more important than their driver's license. And I certainly understand that, and that's not our point in trying to get that taken away. If we can go to a more consolidated type board mechanism where we can make these decisions, and maybe, maybe the makeup of the board has to change a little bit, but where these decisions are made as a group for the benefit of all involved and still have the input from individuals like the steamfitters and/or the, well, they're all the same in that area, the steam fitting and flammable liquids and all of this. The piping's all done by them. Include the boilers into that. A question was asked about plumbing. Why is plumbing not there?
State statute, yeah.
Yeah, state statute gets us on that one, so...
Well, thank you for your, your efforts again to, to take a look at your entire operation. I, I do think that there's a collective agreement within steamfitters to try to consolidate and work with you to consolidate. And they put forward three different boards that they thought were within their scope of practice and trade that they, they could do that with. I just think we, as we move forward, have to decide, you know, how, how big of a enchilada to, to order, so to speak, or what we want. Because I, I don't know if there's, in my sense, at least speaking for me, willingness to go and do that all at once. So, and I know that's kind of an approach we've taken on some other things is, you know...
And I understand. And I, I guess in a way I'm trying to get lazy. The less work I have to do, maybe I can kind of get some other things done. But this kind of helps me because I, you know, I'll over top of that whole division anyway. So whatever the guys do that they have to do with their boards, I'm aware of that all the time, and it just seems like a constant paperwork flow for me. So I guess in a way, yeah, it's a little bit self-serving. But at the same time, I don't think it's, it's probably not the worst thing I brought to you and lessons learned.
No, I'm not, I'm not. And first of all, you know, I want to thank Jennifer. She was, had the biggest smile in the room when you said that. She's, she's kind of like the sacrificial lamb thrown down into the, to make the pitch, so to speak. But it's nice that you came down and, and shared your insights too. It's just my perspective that when I hear such a broad scope of people saying, hey, when you have electrical, they shouldn't really be telling the steamfitters. And when then you hear what the steamfitters actually did, I mean, other than know that they have, they're the trade that wears those uniquely identifying hats that they wear on the job.
Now be careful. They all have uniquely identifying hats on the job.
I didn't know a whole bunch of the scope of what they did, other than be out to their facility and see it. And I think for, for Mr. Andrussek, is your trade, your local shop have a 100th anniversary or something coming up?
Yeah, in a couple of weeks.
I'm looking forward to seeing more of your, your members and learning more about what you do there. But thank you for coming.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, King. You know, what I, what I heard this afternoon, and I'm always looking for this, I did hear people talking, and they talked with pride. They said, look at me. I have this profession, and this is what I'm really standing for. And seeing the sad thing about it is when I, many, many years ago, before I had a tie and a coat on, I went to school, and they said, oh, you had to go to college, you had to do this, this, and this, and wear the tie. And that's why we don't have as many people now, is because we have not given as much dignity to those jobs. And I understand there are a lot of college degrees out there. I'm not saying that you don't at all, and I apologize if you interpret that. So when I'm up here, I'm trying to look at, okay, how can we give a certain type of dignity to people who are really working hard and not making any money on these boards, I don't think? So it's not, gee, I can't get rid of this board because I'm going to lose some dollars. So why do we need these? I like the idea of the electricians knowing their business and even getting together occasionally and with the city and talking about these issues. Because we need people to be talking to each other, and I'm assuming that's happening. That's what I'm looking for. I was intrigued, to be honest with you. I never even thought about starting baby with a small enchilada and maybe increasing it if it, if we can do that in the future. I don't know. But I, I did see or feel some movement from certain groups willing to collapse their, these boards into a certain category if it fits. And I, at the moment, I don't quite understand if they all can get together and it will happen with a major board. I understand they don't set policy, but it sure is nice to be listening to people when we're setting policy, not just to come to us, but to have people be, that dialogue. That is why we get ourselves into trouble. That's why I think we got ourselves in trouble a while back on the electrical, which grade of wire or a combination of wires. I don't know if enough talking had happened before. It may have, I don't know. But I'm looking for people to talk to each other. I'm looking to give some dignity to these, to some of these jobs. Because to be honest with you, I looked at some of the salaries. If I were going to relive my life, instead of being in the field of education, I would have gone in some years. I would not have had the talent. I can admit that right up front. So I'm, I'm in a mix right now. I do see the mayor's idea of, let's make this thing more efficient, like that. But two things that I, and I've learned this from you, I've learned that safety is an issue, so I'm playing with that. But I also know you're saying this will save time when we do this, because the, the city staff will not be meeting. But I also know we're short four inspectors for a while. So if we were really under that kind of pressure, those inspectors would have been hired a long time ago. They would have been hired a long time ago. I know it's hard finding them, so I, I, I get it. But it seems like it's, we're mixing here. We want to be more efficient, but we don't have enough inspectors because maybe we can't find the quality that we're looking for. So this is, this is a big ballgame. And I'm trying to look at the big picture and see if we can't get something going here and maybe evolve later on. I don't, that's where I'm at right now. And I've, thank you, King.
Do what. Mr. Garnett?
Thank you, Mr. President. When I was reading through all the paperwork on this, and I was reminded of it today when we were talking about rigging and signaling. I think that the signaling part of what it does is the gentleman on the ground is signaling to the operator of the crane, you know? But what I'm hearing today is, hold on, wait a minute on this. Time out on this. We need to take a stronger look. And what's the beacon or the signal for me here is one size don't fit all concept. That is still, keeps coming back to me. And I know the trades, they have adjustable hard hats now. It's not just one hat. They have to adjust. And they came to that design of hat through many, many years of discussion. I'm just using that as a, as a simple example. And maybe to those out in TV land, it might be far-fetched. But to me, if we don't take the time out and go over this, so I, and I, I don't, I'm not being offensive to the trades. Please don't take my line of questioning as that, or our legal department. I agree with my colleague to my right. Ms. Taylor has been involved in this from the beginning. It was dropped on her inbox, and she had to run with this. So I'm going to start with, with Ms. Taylor. So if you could come up for me.
Jennifer Taylor, City Law.
The part that I'm grappling with is, what is your, your take on or what you know, or what you've been told that the administration would, would like to see in one person portrayed on this proposed board, speaking for their entire profession? Is there anything that stops them from getting information from their field and bringing it back to this board? Let's say it's in position. It passes, it's created, it's had a couple of meetings. What's stopping a master electrician from gathering information and bringing it back to make a decision for licensing examination or a review of competency? Anything stopping that individual, he or she?
Absolutely nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Was that the premise from the beginning when this came down to your desk?
Yes. When I, when I looked at this and when I identified the mechanical boards, it seemed to have very similar duties. And again, I go back to when I brought this forth to the mayor. It was because these boards all had very similar tasks and duties assigned to them. Then I went and looked at the members of each of those boards and kind of branched them together to see where there was crossover, where there was crossover. I kept those mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, and then I selected somebody from each of those boards to be representative on this one.
What's hard for me is even these three areas, examination, licensing, and the competency of the, of various trades. If I had an electrical issue under any one or a couple of these particular areas that we're talking about, examination, licensing, or competency, having a group of electricians talking this over and them knowing the best practices from around the country, it would seem to me that more, a better response would be, there would be more of a fairness that they could come to or some good common ground when they act under their, their current umbrella. Or same for the steamfitters, three or four of them, or five of them, whatever the current board consists of. And they're talking about this, and they're trying to come to a decision. But you're saying that one steamfitter, that one electrician, that one whatever, whatever, whatever that would form this licensing board, there's nothing stopping them from accumulating that type of knowledge and bringing that to this new board? Nothing whatsoever that you could think of?
No, I can't think of anything that would stop them.
With that, I'll let you rest. Mark, would you come back up?
Mark Andrussek?
Having heard that, what would be your response as a steamfitter to having one professional, one master, whatever the highest grade there is in steamfitters? Because I was amazed at what the responsibilities are that you have. What would be, as long as you've been in the industry 35-plus years, what would be your response?
By not, by not having more than one person on the board? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Let me, I'll rephrase it.
Okay.
Would you agree or not agree that one individ, would there be anything stopping one individual, a master in your trade, to gather information and utilize it, one person on this examining board with other professions? Is there anything stopping that?
There would be nothing to stop someone from discussing that with someone else, whether they brought it back to the board.
This new one?
The new, yeah. Whether after having that discussion, sometimes, I'll speak from a steamfitter standpoint. You are correct. We're very proud people. We're very stubborn. And when you have an idea in your head, sometimes it's hard to admit unless you have a group of people around you talking about certain things. You'll ask somebody a question. You may not agree with the answer, so you might tend to not bring that answer to the table. When there's more than one person at the table, that conversation is encompassed at that table, not away from it. So it's, it's more transparent. It's more representative of different ideas, I believe. Does that make sense?
It does. It responds to another question. Does, does your industry feel that the proposed ordinance of having combined various boards to form this licensing board to work with examination, licensing, and the review of competencies of the various trades? Does, does your trade feel, and I may have missed it in your, in your opening remarks, to what degree do you feel life safety becomes a critical issue if this was formed? Or do you feel that it does? And to what degree?
I feel that it does because, like I stated earlier, each trade, even though we're all on the same jobs together, have different functions. We, we have different safety concerns because of where the work is installed, how it's installed. So what may be a concern to one trade, let's say the steamfitters, because we, we talked about using rigging and signaling. So one of our concerns is the competency of the operator of the equipment. The electricians, although they use operators occasionally, we use them to a way greater degree than they do. So what we feel is important for safety for us may not be as important to another trade.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The, I still have some concerns about this whole, items 40 through 42 that are before us today. We've got life safety issues that trades are concerned about. We have boards that have been not so active. But we also have a board that is active and is suggesting that others be brought into it. But there's concerns of forming a board with just one individual, one knowledge person from each one of the trades, making decisions for the three areas that we've talked about. Jay, I, I listen, you're like E.F. Hutton. When Jay Davis speaks, people listen. That's absolutely no respect for Rodney Dangerfield. But, and I, and I'm for safety myself. First half of my life, that's what I dedicated to. And to take part of that, or a lot of it, over onto this side and operate with a different sort of weapon, so to speak, has been challenging. But taking that extra time and hearing all sides, listening to all sides. I agree with Mr. Jerem in regards to applauding the mayor in trying to streamline some of these things. And I didn't hear anybody come down here and bash the administration for doing this. There's been suggestions made on maybe how it could be done. I agree with Councilmember Pauls, that maybe having a flow chart on what we do, and let us take a look at that, and maybe we, as a group, can come up with some suggestions. And then taking a look at that holistic package and go from there. I'm still, I'm still not convinced, and no disrespect to the mayor, again, I applaud her for wanting to, and we, we have to start somewhere. Ms. Taylor, you've, I applaud your efforts, but right now, if, if the vote was taken today, I don't think that I would be saying yes at this moment. So, and I know we're not voting today, but I'm still concerned about this one size fits all and how just one person is going to be able to speak intelligent enough in a board, not having that, that initial discussion amongst their peers. And whatever it, it is, licensing or competency or examination, which we're dealing with, that's before us today. So, all you have to forward. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, one more time.
Jennifer Taylor, City Law.
Yes. More than likely, if the vote were taken today, you'd probably get a 3-3, which then it would get thrown out. My, my suggestion might be to go back to the administration with the, instead of the one enchilada thing, maybe two smaller burritos. And if you could have...
Why can't we say pizza? Why doesn't it have to be something about Cinco?
We're, we're...
Oh, yeah, Cinco de Mayo season.
If, if, maybe, because some of the boards naturally fit better than others, so maybe if we had two boards instead of one, but just something to think about. And I, I would hate to see all this work done and then it gets voted down. It could, by the skin of its teeth, pass, too, but I'm, I'm wondering if we should not draw the line in the sand yet and try one more time at looking at it and then bringing it back and seeing if we could come with a compromise. Just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, and I was just counting up here. There's about 11 of these boards that I was counting up, and, and I'm not saying this is the solution. I'm just saying, in, in my assessment, if you took the suggestions that the steam fitters had, that would take four boards into one. If you did the sign erectors, stationary engineers, and hoisting and portables, those three, you could put those into one. So now you're, you're up to seven, down to two. And if electrical was open to the alarm review board, that would take two into one, so now you're down into nine into three. And then ACAD and architects and engineers maybe could stay, or they could get something that, I think there's room to go from 11 down to, you know, three or four.
And I'll look at that 11, a couple of them, I'm not sure, boards that have existed for some time, and that would be the flammable and, I don't know, it's one of the others.
Flammable petroleum gas.
And petroleum.
Yeah, liquefied natural, liquefied petroleum gas, flammable liquids, oil burners and steam fitters could all be put into the steam fitters.
And the oil burner board is one that exists in the code. The other two are ones that I'm not sure actually exist or have, have existed for quite some time.
And then, seems like there's similar practice areas with sign erectors, the hoisting and portables, and the stationary engineers. Electric, electricians were nodding on the alarm review board. I mean, they, they do the alarms as it is. And then the ACAD, maybe Mr. Mayfield could, in his trade group, would have thoughts on that. And architects and engineers, just because, you know, I'm a lawyer and I look at them as the same kind of professionals. I don't want to pick on them. I know how I was when this continuing legal education came. But that could be up to 11, down to just a few, so just throwing that out there.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on yours. I don't want to talk about tacos or anything like that, but I think you have somewhat of a solution there. I mean, you know, we're almost like doing committee work here. But I would say that instead of you or I making that decision, they ought to go to the people in that field and talk, say, this makes, or you're crazy, Chris. You know what I mean? Those just don't match. I think that, that's what I'm saying, is we need to start talking this way, and, you know? So I think if we do that, there would be some potential. It's just what... Thank you.
I think there's been some very good discussion here. I think we've got some work to do left, and, and let's hopefully get to it. No more lights?
Next item.
End of public hearing. Next item.
Item number 43, special ordinance delaying special tax removal of litter, group number 2015-7.
Public hearing on agenda item number 43 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is concluded.
Item 44, special ordinance delaying special tax removal of weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, group number 2015-08.
Public hearing is today on item number 44. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 45, special ordinance delaying special tax removal of trimming of trees, bushes, shrubs, hedges, group number 2015-09.
Public hearing on number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, opponents, please. Now, this is on weeds and litter, guys, so if you're, we're talking about something else, weed, okay? All right. Seeing no opponents, public hearing is closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda item number 46 through 57 shall be held on a third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items 58 through 66 shall be held on a second reading.
Motion adjourned. Is there a second? I'll second it. Roll call, Mr. Collier.
Thompson, Gurnett, Jerem, Milton, Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
3:40. We stand adjourned.